Thank you for coming. So we'll stand now and have a prayer and a pledge. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for your many blessings. Even though 2019 was a whirlwind year for me, I'm sure it was for everyone else too. But we thank you for getting us through that year, getting us through it with safety. And we just thank you for your many blessings despite of things that have happened. Lord, I pray for each one of these commissioners today. They've got a big job ahead of them. I pray that you would watch over them, keep them safe on the roads, watch over them in their meetings, Lord, and especially at their board meetings, and help them to agree to disagree and to compromise and to work together for the good of the citizens of Hillsdale County. We not only pray for, like I said, their safety, but give them wisdom to handle difficult issues that lie before them. We pray for the citizens of this county as well, Lord. There's been so many shootings going on, and we just ask for your continued watchful eye over us. We pray for our police officers, firefighters, that you would just keep them safe as well. We pray for the county employees, that you would watch over them and each give them a special blessing and with wisdom and guidance. So as we approach this 2020, we just pray, Lord, that you would be with us, draw us close to you, and may each one of us look to you for that wisdom and guidance that we need. And we thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item of business is the election of the chairperson and how would the board like to proceed? You can either do it by a nomination or by secret ballot. And remember that the chairperson, the secret ballot is only, I guess, instituted by a vote there.
I move to make Mark Wiley chairman.
Support. Okay. There's a motion on the floor to make Mark Wiley chair. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so Mark Wiley, you are chairperson for 2020, and if you would like to stand, I will give you the oath of office. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of chairperson for the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners according to the best of your ability.
I do.
Okay, so I have a copy here. Would you like to sign both of those? All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I have your seat all warmed up, so.
If nobody objects, I'll just stay put.
Okay.
You don't need to move. Is that okay?
Well, I can't kick you if you're not sitting next to me.
Well, that's true, too. See?
Maybe I can move.
There you go. Okay, I'll just sit here until.
Well, I figure it's easier. You have more stuff to move. Oh, thank you. All right.
Hope that's tight.
It's loaded. All right. So thank you for that, and we have election of vice chairperson.
I move that we elect Commissioner Julie Games as vice chairperson.
I'll support that. Is there any other further nominations?
I'll nominate Ruth Brown.
Do you want to hear a second?
I'll say, Alex, can I? I will just, I'll support that.
Can she support?
I have never had somebody support their own nomination before.
Oh, I think so.
I've never run into that either as far as out of the rules.
It's a first rule.
That's a first. All right, is there any other nominations? All right, hearing none. I guess we'll have to have, probably better to have a show of hands or some such.
Call for a secret ballot.
You can't do a secret ballot for vice chair.
Can't?
Nope, only chair.
All right, so all those in favor of Julie as vice chair, please raise your hand. And all those in favor of Ruth to be vice chair, please raise your hand. You gonna vote for yourself? It looks like Julie has three voters, has two. Congratulations, you are the vice chair.
Thank you.
Now Marnie will need to swear you in, so please stand up.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of office of vice chairperson for the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners according to best of your ability?
I will.
I didn't want to say anything while you're signing. It's a good thing you used that pen, because I don't know if that one writes today, is it? Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. You want to take care of the drawing?
Oh, I can, I'd like to move to amend the agenda by withdrawing number 11, other business, and discussing that at the regular business meeting on January 14.
I second that.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote on... Do we have to vote on the amendment, Julie? That's what I thought. And then vote on the agenda as amended?
Yes.
It's a new year. All right, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the amendment passes, so now we vote on the agenda as amended. All those in favor of the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is moved to the 14th, and we will proceed with the approval of the regular meeting minutes of December 26th. I assume everyone had a chance to look at them. Do you have a comment?
I just have two minor things. On, I, first of all, I think that Jody did a really good job with these minutes, because it was kind of, there was a lot of things going on, so I think she did very well. But on the first, on the, not the first page, but down, down under, my printer cut this off, so I'm not exactly sure. But anyways, down here, it says Commissioner Brown moved to pull Resolution 19152, and Commissioner Games moved to withdraw Resolution 19156 and 19153 and add Resolution 19161. So you have that all in one line, even though it was two separate motions.
Except at that point in time, it was not two separate motions.
Then it said motion dies for lack of a second.
Correct.
So that's okay, except I know it was very confusing. When I went back and I looked at the tape, then down here, you have Commissioner Brown moved to withdraw Resolution 19152. So, I don't know. We can leave it as is, it's fine. It's just, that's not.
Technically, if you want to get technical, I should have never even put the one that said died for lack of a second. I should have never even put that in there.
Okay.
But because it was so confusing.
Right, right.
I thought that it needed to be noted.
Right, right, right.
Because there was no action taken on it.
Right.
I should have done nothing with it.
Okay, okay.
Actually, if I may.
It was actually, it was actually Commissioner Caswell that withdrew, on the tape, I mean, it was Commissioner Caswell that withdrew Resolution 19152, but that's okay, we can leave it the same. It was, it was very confusing, I know it was.
The resolutions were two different resolutions.
Right, right.
If you were to entertain those as two different resolutions, and I believe the motion should have been two separate, but however, one correlated the other.
Right, right, right.
That's how it got. But technically, actually, it should have been done two motions, in my opinion.
Right, right.
Because what happened is when you went down later, Commissioner Brown, you withdrew that resolution, then that motion didn't have any second, so it either should have been withdrawn or, of course, it died because there wasn't any support. Because it was treated as a separate motion.
Right, right.
Even though they both correlated. So I think if, you think that should be amended, in my opinion, but I would, I would see what Mr. Chairman.
I think it's okay to leave it as is, because it was very confusing.
Because maybe I should just remove it altogether.
Right, right, okay. And then down here, this is just a typo, is all it is. You have Commissioner Brown moved to follow the recommendation of our counsel. So it should be C-O-U-N-S-E-L, because I meant the lawyer, is what I was talking about, the counsel, the lawyer.
Just spelling.
I think that was just a typo.
Yeah, it is.
So other than that, they're great, and I think you did a very good job.
She did, yes.
Because it was, it was.
So confusing.
Yeah, 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 so that's fine.
Did you need a motion to amend it?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay, is it clerical or?
Right, thank you.
Well, I think, I think Julie did a good job.
She did, with all the confusion and everything.
She did do a good job.
But she is right, she, you know.
She always does.
When something fails for lack of support, it doesn't technically.
Right.
Usually end up on there.
She's, she, you do a very, very good job, Jody.
Thank you.
You really do. And especially, she knows Robert's rules pretty well and procedure pretty well. I think her years of experience show. She's been doing this for a long, long time, she knows what she's doing. And I think that that, that is very important to have, and I think that, I've been on a lot of boards where we don't have that, and when you don't have it, it's a lot worse. So I appreciate, I appreciate the job Jody does.
Thank you.
Send your little comments with the minutes sometimes.
I enjoy that.
Keeps a smile.
Yes.
All right, so with that, do you, did you motion to?
Approve.
I second that.
Approve the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, put them on file, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, thank you. Now you had in your packet a, excuse me, a list of the meeting dates and times, and that is the next thing on the agenda, is to look at those and approve that so it can be published.
I move that we accept the meeting dates and times as presented.
And I second that.
Moved and supported. Is there any comments or any changes that anyone foresees? Marnie?
Just a point for all commissioners. I went ahead and put all of these 2020 agendas on the calendar, under the S drive. Okay, I don't know if you, do you guys that have the laptops have the S drive?
I don't think so. I don't think any of us have access to that, Marnie.
Well, maybe that's something that we need to get ahold of David about, because that will tell you, because I've already contacted people who have presented in 19 and put them on the 2020 calendar. If it's in yellow, I'm still, it's still waiting. But if it's not in yellow, then it's kind of set. Because I know a lot of times Mark will say, well, we'll put them down. Well, I've already got some scheduled. So I think it'll help the commissioners, too, to see who's up, you know, for the next agenda.
Right, because I would like to know that in advance.
So probably, probably access.
Should I just talk to David about that?
Do you have laptopers? Okay, so you could, yeah, I guess just work with David on it. I don't know.
I'll talk to David.
I think that would be helpful.
I'll do that.
How we can access that, because I know, I know the first three months, if there's standing order information is already.
It's not read only.
Right.
But their access should be read only.
Yeah.
Be more prepared for questions.
And, and the access should be read only.
Read only.
Okay, because we're.
Right.
You don't want correction on it by mistake.
So we don't change.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Did we already get a motion?
Yes.
Motion is supported, we don't have a vote.
Okay.
I don't see any conflicts on the dates.
No, I didn't see.
We tried to go ahead, Jody does a good job in researching that.
For how days or. I checked Mac, and I checked, I always have the calendar and go through and make sure that there isn't any conferences or anything.
All right, all those in favor of the 2020 regular meeting dates signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As long as we're talking 2020, I'll make a comment that I heard on the news the other morning about 2020, and I think it, I'm gonna try my best to make sure I put 2020. They said be careful, especially with legal documents, if you just put, like today, 1, 2 slash 20, somebody could slip in there and put 17, 18, 19 behind your 20, and now they've basically changed your document. So they've, on the news the other morning, they recommended that you write out 2020. So I think it's probably a good point.
Very much.
So, appointments to standing committees, that was sent out, I believe, to everyone. Julie and I and Marnie went over that, well, one day last week, I believe it was. Julie was working from Florida, so, but has everyone had a chance to look those over? Is there anything you want moved around? It is a working document. When Julie and I talked about, we were trying to balance it out a little bit. I don't know if we accomplished that, but at least that was the attempt. So, and I think you'll notice there was a little change in the way the format was as far as the listing of primary, secondary, and other. So, because some, some of the assignments have a primary person and a secondary, and those are somewhat interchangeable, so that, you know, someone's always at that meeting.
Right.
Right, so if you're primary on a committee and you can't go, you need to look on the list to see who's secondary and call that person and ask them to attend that meeting. That's the whole idea of it. Also, I, under my area, I'm on the Jonesville LDFA, I just, I got the letter in the mail while I was gone, that I was reappointed to that, so.
Okay.
As, as one of my assignments.
Okay, primary?
Yes.
Okay, all of that?
Yep, so, I was gonna bring it.
See, normally, that really isn't a Board of Commissioner committee, correct? We've never had it on there before. I mean, it's not unheard to have it, but.
Right, these have just evolved so much from what they were originally.
So I can put that on there. And who do you want as secondary?
Well, there wouldn't be anybody, because that's specifically signed for my district, so.
Jonesville LDFA.
Yeah, for what it's worth, Julie and I talked, maybe getting with you, Jody, and trying to work these somewhere, you know, during the year and get them back to where they possibly once were. Because even the headings don't even match up as far as the commissioners, you know, like some of the judiciary things are juggled around, and so we had talked about trying to do it, not in the month of December, but whether we can, you know, going, you know, after the election, we maybe have it so it's back to somewhat right. And I'm not saying it's wrong right now, it's just, like you said, it's kind of gotten jumbled.
Maybe just as an attachment to the bylaws.
I don't even think it should be in the bylaws.
No, I think.
It needs to be separate.
I think we need a bylaws committee, and we need to work on this year, like rewriting the bylaws.
Well, we're getting off track.
Because they're out of date. Is that in rules and procedures?
That would be under, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that'd be the next thing. So I guess we probably should have a motion to approve the standing committees?
I move.
Support.
Unless someone's yet, something they want changed. Of course, they can bring it up at a later point, because it is a working document. But approving it today, at least we can get it posted on the webpage. Right, David?
He's not here. He's listening.
I know he is. Okay, all those in favor of the appointments to standing committees signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is done, thank you. Adoption of rules and procedures, those are in your packet.
I think we need to work on this document during the year, because it's out of date. Breaking out of date.
I got two copies. You have, I got two copies.
And it's to be, something needs to be revised and.
We went through this, Mr. Chairman, about four years ago.
Yes.
Completely renewed it.
I think the matter is just that we look at it again, I don't know if there's any change you want to bring in. They're pretty much standard, like, you know, most of the adoptions that go with planning commissions and with our Roberts rule, they all kind of go co-linking, you know, nothing really much different, other than if you want to add anything, but the rules and procedures, if you have already revised it in the past, then I think it's just a matter of going through it again, that's it.
Well, I think some things need to revise, need to revise, because we have certain sections that are just not correct.
Not correct.
Like the standing committees and then, you know, at the end where we're told to chair everybody, it just doesn't match. And rather than have those actually in the bylaws, I think they should be like appendixes or something, or exhibit A and B, or however you want to do it, instead of having them listed, because it changes from time to time, you know, what those are. And so there's that and probably some other, you know, section, 6.1.
6.1 probably doesn't even need to be in it.
Right.
Does it?
I can, no, I can tell you that the board that decided to put these in the minutes, I argued with them instead, or not in the minutes, but in the rules and procedures, I said, these are not rules and procedures, they shouldn't be part of the bylaws, but the board wanted them as part of the bylaws.
Because they change, they shouldn't be a part of bylaws.
Originally, they actually listed who the chair was of those committees. I said, you can't do that, that changes all the time, so. So I just think we should have a bylaws committee, and we should go through this and just update and revise the document to make it accurate.
Well.
I mean, I'll volunteer to be one of the people, I'd like to have a partner to help.
Well, I, I guess I, for what it's worth, I'd entertain a motion to remove 6.1 right now, and we could renumber, I think if I'm looking at this correctly, you can just renumber six, two, three, and four to be one, two, and three.
Well, I think that if we're going to do what Julie wants to do, then we should just wait and not do a motion to remove 6.1 right now. I think we should just do, have a bylaws committee, and then we'll do them all, whatever they recommend, we can talk about, because, because whatever that committee recommends, the whole board has to vote on and approve, right?
Yes, in order to get it, the final document, so.
I would say let's just wait before we start.
Well, if you want to prove them as is, then the chair will take the prerogative to appoint a committee and have this taken care of by the first meeting in February, because it's.
I think it needs to be, I.
I think we might need a little bit of time.
Yeah, you're gonna need more time than the first meeting in February to review bylaws.
Because if we're gonna put these on the webpage, they need to be correct, and.
I move that we accept these as, as they are right now. And then, that's my motion.
I second that.
All right, then moved and supported to accept them as is for now. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? With that said, since you're so energetic.
I was thinking something needs to be done, not that, I know how energetic I am, but.
I will appoint Julie and Namrata if you'll assist.
Absolutely.
And, once again, since this is on the webpage, I think time is of the essence, so I will give you until the first of March. How's that?
Okay, we'll try to get it done as quickly as possible.
First meeting in March, we'll have the findings that Commissioner Carolyn and Gaines bring to us, and we'll get them updated.
What about, what about Jody?
Definitely, we'll keep her, and obviously we'll have her input.
Well, and also.
I do not need to be on a committee.
Right, right, but, but you do need.
But we'll run it by you to make sure that it's.
You do need some, you need historical perspective.
He will.
And you need to understand, you know, why things are in here and why they're there in the first place.
Absolutely.
Before you start changing a bunch of stuff.
They can email questions to her, but she is not part of the committee.
Right, right, right.
But historically, it'll be more feasible that we can take input with Jody.
Also, you know, if other commissioners have ideas or things that they think need to change or whatever, they should email us and give us your, you know, input ahead of time.
So, first.
Meeting in March.
First meeting of March. And try and send out a printed draft. So, okay.
And when you send your, when you send your draft, you know, point out, highlight or somehow point out, like, what, what you're changing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. You may actually have to send out the new version and the old version simultaneously.
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
You can do that.
All right. So.
We have further discussion of rules and procedures?
Well.
I would, I would like to discuss the board packet and how we do that and how we can do it better. I think we should have a deadline for stuff being in, being in the packet. And then I think when it's done, that all the commissioners should have a chance to review it before it's put out to the public as a meeting notice. And if, if you have issues with it, anything on it or something not on it, then you're aware, and then you can let, you should immediately email the chair and Marnie or Jody, whoever, whoever published it, and tell them that you have an issue. And they get in touch with the chair to either change it, or delete it, or add it back in, or whatever needs to be done. But I think we need to have more order about how we do this, and I think the commissioners should be allowed to review the packet before it's published as the official meeting notice, so that we know what's in there, in the packet.
So there's, after you and I talked about this, I went through Roberts Rules, and there's another one that discusses about public meetings, and I don't remember the name of it, but it's another publication. Nowhere in there does the packet or the agenda have board approval prior to the meeting. The board approval's not at the meeting. So, but what it does indicate is that everything flows to the chair as our rules indicate, so the chair is responsible for making sure the agenda is prepared. Now, with that said, we can still send it out. The problem is, is Marnie could send it out once, so if everything flows, if you want, and, and actually, a few years ago, we were doing this, all the commissioners would send the stuff to the chair, the chair would then forward it on to Marnie to put in the packet. So there was that flow of communication, but we've kind of somehow evolved away from that. And so to eliminate five people, you know, send them stuff to Marnie or contact them or whatever, you know, if it all flows to one point, then, but it can still be sent out. The problem being is, is you never know from one meeting to the next because of Marnie's work schedule, because this is secondary to her primary. She could send it out at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock on Friday, you know, and it's gotta be posted by a certain point in time, so, you know, there is that element of when are you gonna look for it and when are you gonna review it, and, you know, so we'd, if you want to do that, we've got to have some sort of timeline that if you want to change, it's gotta be questioned or submitted prior to, what, 3:00 o'clock or something?
Your board rules say that it has to be available to the commissioners at least two business days prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. And if we're putting it out on the website, personal opinion, I don't know if Marnie agrees or not, it should be set by Thursday, because if I have it Thursday so I can put it out and I have a problem getting it out on the website, which has happened.
Yep.
I've still got a whole day before I'm violating your two-day thing, okay? Putting it out on Monday and then having the meeting on Tuesday, I've had people, public, jump down my throat because it wasn't out there.
Right.
And it was not of anything that we had any control over.
Right, it was a tech problem.
This is just saying business days, not calendar days.
I think that the, I think that the.
So that even makes sense.
That would be Friday and Monday.
Yeah, and Friday, it doesn't get out until probably at least 3:00.
3:00 between, yeah.
So maybe that's another thing, that needs to be changed as far as the number of days.
Right, or calendar days, you know, because you have access on the weekend.
Calendar days, especially since it's going out on the web, calendar days would be better than business days.
I think that the, I think that the, the chairman controls the agenda. And I think that once the agenda, if you set the agenda and then you send it to the commissioners for us five to review it, I just think that that's, that's opening up a can of worms. That could, that could go on and on and on with, I want this changed and I want that changed and I don't want this and I want that, and I want this, but Julie doesn't want that, and, you know, I don't want this, but now who wants it? And it, that's, that's gonna just, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a nightmare. I mean, I think approval of agenda is on our agenda. When we have a meeting, every meeting that we have, it says approval of agenda on it. And it's at that point that that's when you're supposed to say, I want this pulled, or whatever, and then everybody votes on it, which gives everybody voting. When, when you, when you do it by email and you, and you're saying, review this and tell us if you want changes, well, then you don't know what anybody else, this is an email between me and you, or me and Marnie, or whoever, and we're, I'm saying, okay, I want this, you don't know what anybody else is saying. So I think it's better to keep it the way it is, because it, approval of agenda is out in transparency for the public, and it's out in front of all the commissioners, and it's to say, I want this pulled, or I want this added, or I want to do whatever, and then everybody has to vote on it. And it's also transparent to the public, instead of doing it by, by email, and then there's no discussion or there's no, you don't know what any other commissioners are thinking, okay? So I just think that, I don't think it's a good idea to, the, the, the chair is supposed to control the agenda, and I don't think that it's a good idea to send it out to the commissioners for, for review. That's, that's just my opinion. I'd like to know what Bruce thinks and what, what everybody else thinks. What do you think, Bruce?
Fine the way it is.
What do you think, Nemo?
Yeah, I think, you know, when you have an agenda and, you know, you've had all these, for example, say, resolutions or anything already, already there for review, and it's out there, that's why we have the head of the chair, you know, the chair takes control that, you know, you pull it, or you can have the ability to place it for that day, time restraining or whatever, or table it. So even, I was just going through Roberts Rule the other day, it doesn't really give you a, a, a understanding if there should be a deadline, but you can place a deadline if you want to, if you're bringing in big resolutions. But otherwise, the way it's been going on, it's, it's all right, but if you think that the chair thinks that it's okay to continue with that and it's time restraining, or however the pattern of the day is, as it relates to timeframe, can pull it, table it, or however the board thinks. But that is why, when we say, like, approval of agenda, if you want to add on to the agenda, that's why that ability is there. That, that, that is the little framework that I go through, the Roberts Rule, that that's saying, that if you would like to approve the agenda as is, or if you want to add an agenda, that's why the ability is there. And I understand Commissioner Gaines' point as well, that, yeah, they should have a little bit extra time. To have the deadline becomes more feasible for the, you know, the Clark and minutes and everything, office structure, we understand. But when, as we're going on and dealing with the public, I believe we're putting, putting in a lot of pressure as it relates to work and business, you know, to conduct. So following a pattern, and there is a possibility, when you have the agenda there and it's just brought in some extra paperwork to place it as an agenda, you have the ability to table it. So I think the procedure, the way it's going, and it's okay. I think it's, again, I understand the, you know, meaning of, you know, having a deadline, but still, there can be more business coming in. We are very busy as commissioners. I think it's okay the way it's going right now. We should just have the ability, if we can't take care of it that day, just table it. That's what my thought is, without any confusion, I mean.
One, one other thing is, sometimes I think that the chair, or Marnie, or Jody, or whoever, has knowledge of things that maybe the rest of us don't have, and maybe there's reasons why the agenda is being set up, or there's something on there that we don't know until the meeting. You know, when we have the meeting, then you start discussing, or you, or you start discussing, or we all start discussing, and you say, okay, this has come up, or I found this out, or, you know, now we need to talk about this for this reason, and now we know. But, but when this agenda first comes out, I mean, we, we don't know that, we haven't had the meeting yet, but you might, we, you might have knowledge of some stuff, and that's why you're putting it on the agenda that we don't, we aren't aware of yet. So then to start firing back and say, well, I don't want that on there, or something, you might say, well, yeah, but we need to.
Well, I have.
You'll find out when we get there that we need to talk about this.
I have tried, and sometimes I don't get around to it, and I do apologize, but I have tried to put things, you know, if we put things on there, and, and you are absolutely right, there are things that happen within the county that have got to get on there.
Right.
You know, just like some of the monetary things that we just went through under Bruce's committee, you know, we put them on under the finance chair, it's gotta be.
Right, right, right.
And that's just one of many examples, but over the years, I've tried my best to inform you if I've stuck something in under yours, and I, I do apologize if I sometimes don't get it done, but, you know, just to give you a heads up. But I, I do think that Jody makes a valid point, though, that, you know, this last-minute stuff coming in has gotta, we've gotta be more timely, and probably, at the very least, close of business on Thursday is kind of the, the deadline for adding stuff in.
And if, and if a commissioner calls us, oh, but I wanted this on the agenda, then I would tell them, you can add it at the meeting.
Right, right.
We have to have a deadline to get it out there on the website. That's, that never used to be a problem until we started putting stuff out on the website. Now that we do that, there has to be a deadline. And if you have something else to add, then you just add it at the meeting.
But you know, the thing is, now, I've had, I've had constituents call me and say, I want to come up and be on the standing order. And I'll say, the chair controls the agenda and you have to contact Mark and ask him about, I can't tell you yes, and call Jody and say, hey, Jody, put so-and-so on standing order. That's not how it works.
Because I'm gonna say.
It goes through the chair. So I can't, you know, or I've had different people under me that are department heads or, or a person from an agency say, I want to be on the agenda. I say, you have to, you have to call Mark. I'm not putting people on the agenda, just, you know.
Right.
And calling Jody and telling Jody to put people on the agenda. So that's not, we shouldn't be doing that, you know? Anytime I've ever had anybody contact me about the agenda, I say, I say, call Mark.
And that's fair enough, you know, to call, we go through via the chair to the, Jody and everybody. And also, folks don't always have to keep the timeframe to, you know, have something put in the agenda to speak, they can always use the open forum and then restrict themselves to three minutes or five minutes as our Roberts Rule do indicate. So we have that opportunity for our constituents to do that as well. So you don't necessarily have to come and just play, unless you have a very, a presentation, of course, and a more than five-minute presentation, then by all means, reach out to the chair and then forward them to the, to Jody and Marnie to get on the agenda. But we always try to enable our constituents to come and speak in the open forum and restrict themselves to do the three minutes, of course.
I believe, I believe we've, we're basically restricted standing order, and help me out here, Jody, but it's basically been entities that we do business with or.
Right, right.
Or department heads that we're gonna come.
You guys are really.
Right.
What's that?
Or might consider doing business with.
Right.
Like, we're gonna have the.
Yeah, they actually, and elected or department head will put them on standing order, but generally, we don't allow individuals.
That's another thing.
They can speak at.
Public, that's what public comments for. I've had constituents call me and say, I want to be on standing order, and I say, public comment is for constituents.
Right.
Standing order is for an agency head, or a department head, or an elected official, or somebody that we, that the commissioners deal with, not, not an individual person.
I think you've all noticed, I've tried restricting that to two standing orders. You know, there was a point in time where we were doing three and maybe even four, and the meetings got longer and longer, so.
Sure, yeah.
We've, I've tried my best. Now, with that said, I think, Marnie, I think we get two on every meeting now, all the way through March right now. So that does kind of stretch things out by trying to, but it, it helps us to be able to conduct business and/or get out of here in a more timely fashion, which, anything before noon's a good thing.
That's right.
But I think it's good discussion. I think, I think we do need to address the, as you and Namrata go through the rules, maybe we need to change the two business days to two calendar days, and.
Just be careful that you don't take that down to Sunday, Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not business.
Do you think it'd be appropriate to put in there, though, that we've got to have a deadline of the packet information?
If you put it in your board rules, even though it's a working document, it does hold you a little more accountable, that all, all items for the agenda need to be to the chair for finalization by 3:00, 4:00 o'clock on Thursday before the meeting, or something to that effect.
Well, sometimes Stephanie will have a late bill come in.
Right.
That she'll need a, a resolution for, maybe on Friday or something like that, some.
I've been better about getting those out.
No, no, I know you've been a lot better than the previous, but, you know, getting them to us, but sometimes you do get maybe something in the mail, you know, so maybe with an exception of the, of maybe a bill that might need to be.
But then it can be added if she.
It could be added to the agenda as well.
Gets to the, gets to the chair.
Right, right.
It just won't get out of consent, agenda has to be a regular.
That's right.
Right, right.
So we're saying Thursday, 5:00?
I think.
Well, whatever the committee.
Yeah, the committee will come up with a time.
And that's the timeframe we're looking at, Thursday, 5:00.
Yeah, Thursday, 4:00, 5:00, somewhere in there would, we'll know for sure by the first of March.
Yes, we can, we can discuss it further. But also, other, other than timing and to not, you know, have debacles, I just think that I should know if a resolution is being put under my section of the agenda for my committee, which really, I'm supposed to be the one bringing forth resolutions for my committees. I think I should know if somebody else, I don't think the other commissioners should be barred from putting resolutions in, I'm not for that. I think anybody should be able to bring a resolution if they want to bring to the table, the other commissioners don't want to vote for it, you know, they. You know, that, that's how you deal with that. But I think everybody should be allowed to bring things, but I don't think I should be able to stick stuff under Ruth, or Bruce's, or Namou's committee, and they don't know till the packet comes out. This is the, this is one of the other issues I'm getting at. I don't think that's right, and then when the packet's out, it's already published, and there's nothing you can do about it.
So the chair is the one that put those items where they were? It wasn't any other commissioner, the chair reviews those, and, you know, they're placed appropriately. But, you know, it's, like I, like I said earlier, I do my best to inform everyone if there's been something put under your committee. So, I will try and do a better job going forward.
All right, that's all, I respectfully ask that, thank you.
The board, it already approved the rules and procedures, but we've been having discussions, is there anything, any further discussion at this point? Okay.
One, one thing I told Julie was that, back, back when Namou first got on the board in November, David came up and took our board picture.
Yes.
And that was in November, it still hasn't been posted, the, um-
She's gotta talk to him about the abstract she made.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's still got Tim Shaw's picture on there, so, okay.
Well, if he, if he had trouble with that picture, let us know, and we'll take a new one. And then Ruth can wear a different sweater.
Thank you.
Anyways, okay. Then, if, if he needs a new picture, make sure everybody knows well ahead of time.
Okay, yes, yes.
So that everybody can wear their shiny new tie or whatever, so.
Okay, where is that though?
Actually, I didn't get any ties for Christmas, so.
Getting new firm ties?
No, maybe get some snacks. Anyways, that brings us up to public comment. Anyone wish to address the board? Please, your name, sir.
I am Steve Wismar, Jefferson County Supervisor.
Want to come up to the podium?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just say, I work for a living.
Yes.
Our concern in Jefferson is ambulance. A while back, we, ambulance service, I should say, we voted to replace reading emergency with Hudson ambulance, and it's worked out well. And one of the rare times, I think that Pittsford and Jefferson have agreed on anything, they did the same. Geographically, it makes sense, otherwise, it makes sense, so I'm just simply here to urge the commission to keep that in mind, that that's the desire of both of our boards, that we retain Hudson as our ambulance service, and to act, refund accordingly. So, that's just my, we have a special meeting scheduled concerning, concerning the ambulance situation this afternoon at 1:00, which we will discuss. And if there's anything that comes out of that that you folks need to know, I will contact Bruce from there. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Is Derek anything for us?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I say something to Steve, or should I not?
Yeah, we've been trying not to interact with public comment, but if you want to talk to him afterwards. Steph, you got anything for us? Okay. Other business we've taken, taken care of. One thing that we always do at the other meetings, which we don't have on this as agenda, but I will allow any additional business or additional thoughts. Ruth, Bruce, Julie, Amrata? Well, that was quick. Bruce, you and I do have a meeting after this with Kim Berger. That'll give me time to have the neighbor bring me another set of keys. I still can't figure that one out. And I thought 2020, I'd have better vision. With that, we stand adjourned, thank you.